Bill, could you let the guests in, please?
Oh, never mind. You already done it.
Okay, we'll get to it. I don't know, I just, we'll figure it out when we get to that part.
Commissioner Cock, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
You are, yes, we can.
You're coming through loud and clear.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
And I want to confirm, how do you say your last name?
Uh, Cock, like game cock.
Okay.
I'll just give it one more minute, John, and then we'll fire it up. Did you hear from anybody, by the way? Did you, did you hear from Eric or anybody?
We heard that Commissioner Freiberger will be here.
She's here. I'm talking Commissioner Johnson. Okay, with that, I will open the Planning Commission meeting of January 17th, 2023 at 6:34 PM. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
For which stands
Under God
Indivisible
Justice for all.
Okay, with that, roll call, Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Cock.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Frenant.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Max Maddox, I'm sorry, absent. Commissioner Fatizzi, present. Commissioner Huggins.
Uh, here.
You're here. There we go. Has everyone had the opportunity to take a look at the consent agenda from the minutes of December 20th, '22? And are there any comments? Okay, what is it?
I know I wasn't here, but I appreciate the minutes because I wasn't here and I was able to read what happened.
Okay.
I didn't have my light on. Uh, thank you, Katie, for the excellent minutes. I used to do it for years, not here, but somewhere else, and it's hard to find a balance between saying too much and too little. I think it's really good. I did find two tiny little typos. I'm sure you're smiling. She always, she always finds them first.
She hasn't spoken yet. She'll have the opportunity.
And they are, I highlighted them on the saved one, but of course, that's not the one up right now. If somebody else wants to talk, I can.
Go for it, because I'm gonna write down what those amendments need to be after we make a motion. Go ahead, what is it?
I'll find it. I'm gonna go to the saved one, because I had it highlighted. Sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, here it is in the saved minutes. Opening. See, oh, there it is, okay. It says, "The city attorney."
Okay, which, page one, page two?
Page one.
Page one. The city attorney Tara Keller.
Yeah. Keep reading, it says, "Cannot regulate and gave suggestions," I think it's supposed to be on verbiage, instead of one.
Okay.
And then, this is a handy gizmo here, I can highlight things. Next paragraph starts with Mr. John Coleman. Probably about the third sentence, it talks about the, as a farmer. Fourth, fifth line down, "As a farmer, his it would be preferred."
What page are you on now?
Oh, that would be page, page two. Go to the top paragraph, fifth line down, one, two, three, four, five, "As a farmer." Other than that, I appreciate it. I know it's hard work.
Are you all right? Anything else?
I, I have just one. So on page two, bottom paragraph, I think there's maybe a word or two missing. It just, uh, second sentence. Jean also gave additional explanation of the RCW and the how improvements and/or changes to historic property. Is there supposed to be something more to that sentence?
Do you have a recommendation?
So I did go back and listen to the recording of that, and I believe, taken from the gist of what she was saying, it should say something along the lines of how improvements or changes to historic property have to go before a local review board for, before they can be approved, something like that. But... Or maybe just go.
I see what you're saying, yeah, it should go on a little bit more, yeah, yeah. They just want to add on to the end of that sentence, "Are managed?" Because that's basically what she was talking about. There, there was a whole series of processes and how they're managed in order to make that happen. This is a real simple change.
That, that would work. Yeah, that's fine.
Pat, anything?
Uh, no.
Anyone else? Going once, twice? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda from December 20th? With the amendments recorded by permit tech Katie Quinn. Do I have a first?
All right, so move.
Okay, we have a first, second?
With, with the, with the expressions that you've spoken.
Correct, yes.
I second it.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Frenant, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous? Okay, motion carries with the following amendments that you recorded on page one. On verbiage with one, page two, the top fifth line down, "In is his," or whatever we came up with. And page three, the bottom paragraph, "Are managed." Cool. Okay.
So before we move on to general public comment, just want to move up some of the Planning Commission discussion right now, just so we have a chance to introduce. We have a new Planning Commission member. The, um, online, we have our newest Planning Commission member, who was, was just newly minted by the mayor and approved by the city council in December. And so, I'm gonna lean over my shoulder and look to Mr. Paul Cock, if he wants to say any words, or give your, give an introduce, introduce yourself, maybe?
Yeah, sure, I'm delighted to be here, and I thank the mayor and city council for appointing me. I look forward to working with all of y'all. I've lived in Seidron Willie, my wife and I, for 25 years now. We raised five kids, we have three grandkids. And I recently retired after 18 years as the Director of University Communications at Western Washington University in Bellingham, so I'm delighted to no longer have to make that drive every day. Otherwise, I love Seidron Willie, I think it's a great place to live, wouldn't want to live anywhere else. And I look forward to working with y'all. Thank you.
That's great. That's the same reason why we're all here as well.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, shall I move on to the general open public comment section? Okay. Prior to opening the general open public comments, my guidelines are, if anyone wishes to speak, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of the here, ahead of the open public comment section. The instructions to submit comments are published prior to Planning Commission meetings on the monthly Planning Commission agenda on the city website. If you would like to speak, please state your name and address, any group or organization that you represent. So I will open the general public comment section at 6:44 PM. And with that, do we have any emails or mails to be read into the record?
Staff has not received any emails or mail.
Thank you. Do we have any online audience members wishing to speak? Anyone? I see two people here.
Uh, yes.
Okay, can you introduce yourself? And yeah, thank you.
Okay, it's my time to speak now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Scarlett Ponder. I represent the RJ Group located at 222 Grand Avenue, Suite F, in Bellingham, Washington. I apologize if my speech sounds odd. I had a dentist appointment and the Novocain hasn't worn off, so I will try to articulate.
You're, you're fine, actually, you're, you're good.
Okay, great, it's just lingering, so, good to hear.
So Scarlett, Scarlett, are you, are you gonna be commenting about the live-work stuff? Or do you, are you gonna be commenting about the, something else?
The live-work amendment.
So we, we've, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop her just because we've invited the RJ Group here to give comments as part of this meeting, so.
Okay.
You don't need to be restricted to this, because you're, you were invited to give comments on this because of your expertise in the field and because you are interested in possibly developing live-work units. So we wanted to have a discussion with, with you as part of the regular part of the unfinished business while we'll be talking about live-work units. So if you want, just hang tight and we'll, we'll get you involved in that conversation.
And Carla, before we begin the discussion, after we go through things, staff will give us a whole update on everything that we have here, and then that'll be your time to add into it as well. This way, before we start talking about different things, we get the full picture as to what everybody's thoughts are. Does that work for you? I guess. Okay. So that doesn't count, as far as online members. Is there any members of the audience that wish to speak? You know, we were outside, you had some things that you wanted to say. Here, this would be your time.
Next time.
Okay. So at this particular point, I will close the open general public comment section at 6:46 PM. And moving on, we have unfinished business. And with that, John, why don't you start this?
I'm actually gonna be taking over.
Okay, there you go. Either one is fine.
Okay, everyone, so we're meeting today to discuss live-work. I know that last time we intended to do this, we didn't quite have a quorum. And now we've got a new Planning Commission member, so I think it's best that we just kind of start things over from the beginning. Kind of discuss.
Agree.
Everything that we've done. So basically, what we're looking at here is, back in 2004, October 2004, we added live-work units to the list of permitted uses under the mixed commercial and the industrial zone, in the industrial zone as a transition between residential and industrial use. When we did that, it was an oversight that we did not ever put code regulations to kind of govern the construction, occupancy, parking, any of that for live-work units. So it's kind of been left open to interpretation. It's very difficult for us to hold anyone to particular standards if there are none. So what we've done is kind of looked through, see, you know, what, what we want live-work units to look like in Seidron Willie. So kind of going over what exactly a live-work unit is. So these amendments kind of work to create a definition for that. So, um, put in a definition here, sorry. Shuffling through my papers here. So for live-work unit, we've defined it as a residential use located above or behind a commercial use within the same building and is reserved for and regularly used by the resident. And that definition is followed by a lot of conditions, kind of regulating how we want the construction and occupancy to look. You know, we're concerned mainly on trying to separate the commercial versus the residential use. Live-work units are intended primarily for commercial use with residential kind of as a, I wouldn't say an afterthought, but like, secondary, yeah. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of drive for people to look for live-work units as a, as a place to do, you know, their small businesses and, and living there as well. Strong economic, demographic, and household trends kind of push for people, they want to work from home, they want to start up their local small business, trying to get away from needing the car to go from home to the workplace, things like that. Just a lot more flexibility and autonomy that comes with live-work units. So we've, we see this as a really good opportunity to kind of give something to the people that they're really looking for these days. But we're also being careful about regulating these things, so we're, you know, preventing hazardous, incompatible uses and preventing live-work units from reverting back to purely residential use, as we've seen that happen quite a few times. So in preparation for coming up with these amendments, I did some research on what they've done in Bellingham, Seattle, and Tacoma. And what I've found was, Bellingham and Seattle, surprisingly, they kind of base things just off of what building code, basic building code says that they need to do. Tacoma has some pretty tight regulations, actually, and I, I'm not sure that I attached this, but they have a live-work and work-live uses tip sheet. And there's, there's certain things in this that we were kind of looking at to include potentially. We can talk about this later, but wanting to discuss how maybe inspecting things after, after the fact to make sure that things are in compliance after the live-work unit is created. They have kind of a, like a covenant type of thing that they have to submit every year, something like that. Forgive me, I'm trying to remember what exactly the mechanism is, but essentially, they, the owner has to prove that they still have a live-work unit that complies with their code every year. And that would kind of, we can discuss what that would look like later. But I thought maybe we should run through the amendments that I've proposed here. A lot of them are meant to separate the commercial and residential functions, kind of govern what kind of uses are allowed, and things like that. If you want me to, I can read them out loud, go down the list.
Could I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
Before you do that?
Yeah. John, John would like to say something as well, I don't know.
Go ahead, yeah, I have a couple of questions myself, but please, have at it.
Well, I just, I just want to know, did, did where it's allowed change?
No.
It's still.
Still mixed commercial and industrial.
Okay, thank you.
So, as Nicole explained, the, the purpose of the live-work unit is to allow secondary residential use in commercial zones. So it's allowed, right now, we allow live-work units in the mixed commercial zone. And so, as you know, from the mixed commercial zone, you have to have commercial primarily, and then you're allowed to have residential above, so this would be similar. And so, we wanted to make it very clear that the commercial is first, this is commercial property. So the commercial needs to be there for sure before we allow any residential ancillary to it. It also stands to reason to specify how much commercial needs to be included. So it doesn't, you know, someone doesn't make a, you know, a photo booth, dating myself, but, you know, like a, a very small 20 by 10 little room or something, and call that the commercial, and then the rest of it would be residential. So I think that stands to reason to have some requirements for how much residential or how much commercial is allowed, whether it's a proportion, or like the downstairs, or square footage, or something. And then, it's also, they're also allowed in the industrial zone. So the idea is, in the industrial zone, they can be a buffer between neighboring zones and the industrial zone. So if you've got an industrial zone that's adjacent to a residential zone, instead of having a, you know, factory right up to that property line, live-work units would make a nice buffer, because they would also have the industrial use in the, in the part of the building, and then residential above, and they, they can act as a buffer between the more intense industrial use and the neighboring residential zone. Some of the problems that we anticipate and that other cities have experienced and tried to address in their code is actually having the commercial or industrial part of the building used for that and preventing people from just living in it and making it all just one residential unit. Because what we do now want to have is to have something that's supposed to be commercial and just strictly residential. That's, that is not the intent of our residential zone, and it's not the intent of the industrial zone. Residential units are strictly prohibited in the industrial zone, except in the case of live-work units as a transition buffer area between, on the edge, adjacent to residential, residentially zoned property. So the idea is that we're trying to codify regulations to make sure that the intent of what a live-work unit is, is in code and clear to anybody who wants to apply for a live-work unit permit. You know, maybe back up a few steps, a live-work unit is occupied by the resident or, or the commercial occupant. So whoever's, whoever's operating the business downstairs lives upstairs, or, you know, maybe one of their employees lives upstairs, somebody who works downstairs can live upstairs. There, it's one building, it's one unit, although they are separated for fire purposes. They have sprinklers, because they're a mix of residential and commercial, and that's something that the International Building Code requires. There's, so there's, you know, I think there's a one or two-hour fire barrier between the living and the, the commercial space below. However, you cannot. However, you cannot rent out, say you live, you own the building and you live upstairs, you can't rent out that downstairs area to a commercial operation that is not associated with your person. Or, nor can you, say you own the building and you operate a business upstairs, just rent out the upstairs unit to a residential tenant that's not associated with the business. So it gets a little complex in, you know, trying to govern the actual use of a live work unit, because staff isn't going and knocking on doors all the time, being like, hey, so does the person upstairs, living upstairs, work downstairs? Like, that's just something we're not really up to speed to do, nor should we have to. So what we're trying to do is create a mechanism for all of this to be set forth straightforward upfront before anything gets built, and have clear expectations to the owner of the building that they know how they need to operate. It's not two separate units, and, you know, at no point should the commercial industrial portion downstairs be used as residential. That's something that we feel very strongly about, and council feels very strongly about. So we want to put something into code to do that. And that is why the code, as we put it together, is written the way it is, and I think there's probably still some additional changes that we may need to make to further require that whoever's living in, whoever's occupying that commercial space is definitely commercial or industrial, if it's in the industrial zone, and not residential.
So, just a question, because I do see this, and just in my field of work. We have some numbers here. It says not more than five non-residential workers or employees are allowed to occupy the commercial area at any one time, and we're limiting it to 3,000 square feet. That's really not practical, I'm going to tell you why. A lot of times when you see the live work stuff, it's a business that actually has something going on that needs to be managed 24 hours a day. It's things as simple as, I've seen residential units that are in gas stations and the mini-mart section of it, because it's a 24-hour gas station, and they might keep 24-hour services going. You see a lot of that. But here's something like a cannabis grow operation. Somebody needs to be on site there 24 hours a day, because all that equipment is going 24 hours a day. So even though somebody has to live there during the day, there's going to be more than five people at that area. And that's just examples, we could probably figure a hundred of them out.
Those are examples, are more like caretaker units.
Okay, so what's the difference then? If somebody's living there, I mean, is that, what would be the difference, whether they're caretaking, or whatever, they're living there?
So, I don't know where those fall in, but that's not the intent of what a live work unit is. A live work unit is typically a smaller scale and a smaller business.
Stuff that I've seen, when we did this in 2004, we looked at a couple of places, including Sumner, and the kinds of things that we were seeing were things like a coffee roaster, and it was behind the main street of Sumner, between a residential area and the CBD. And basically, the coffee roaster supported, they didn't have a shop inside, but they supported a main street business that had, that sold their coffee and brewed their coffee. There was a strip canoe maker, guy who makes, used strips of wood and builds canoes, one by one or two at a time, in his downstairs of his live unit. There was a karate studio, I believe, in one of the places we went, and a dance studio in another place that we went to. So, you know, these are businesses that operate nine to five, not 24/7, in my experience. And it may have changed, because it's been 20 some years, so.
But we're going to see it all, though, I guess, when you put something in code. We, you know, we have all different examples of different things.
Right.
But I guess at the end of the day, it's like, we're limiting it to five employees at any one time. That might not be practical, depending on what the business is, right? What if it's something that's seasonal, that you need 15 people in there for any one particular point, and, you know, during the year, it's a different, it's less of a staff? All I'm saying, then, listen, this is a great start, but when I'm seeing like limitations on the number of employees, where things tend to do this with any business, what are we trying to do? We saying, between business hours, no more than X amount of people, or after a certain time, they can't all just like hit a bunch of bunk beds, and all of a sudden, everybody's living on site until the next morning? I mean, you know, that's just my question.
Yeah, kind of reiterating what John said, that mechanism, the five non-residential workers, was kind of a mechanism to limit the size of the kind of business you can have.
But we're saying in the industrial area, though, that's where, the mixed commercial that I can understand, but in industrial area, that's a totally different animal, so.
I kind of see it as similar to the alcohol hall production facilities that we did, brewpubs and stuff.
That would be a great example, by the way.
When you get to a particular size of, well, I'm just saying that, when you get to a particular size, you no longer fit. With that scenario, you didn't fit in the downtown anymore, you needed to go into the industrial area and build yourself a facility, or rent a facility. And I see this the same way. I mean, this is a good way for kind of mom and pop businesses to live in the same building that they work in, but when you get to a certain size, or you're working, or you're running 24/7, which they're not, we never intended them to be, we intended them to be eight to six kinds of businesses, so when you exceed that, you need to run 24/7, you need to go find a industrial building or industrial facility, so.
What if you need to live there?
Yeah, that's my, well, you don't have to live there, but.
What if somebody wants to?
Well, when you're, I mean, this is just my opinion, but when you're doing a live work, you might be doing it because you don't want to commute, and that's great, but you're probably doing it because you can't afford a house and run, and start your business up. If you're getting to five, six employees, you're probably getting to the point where you can afford, like any other business, to look at regular industrial space. So anyway, that's just my take on it, and I'm not hard set on that, but that was our intention when we put it in place.
Yeah, so we specifically wrote this not to be something like a caretaker unit in an industrial building. First of all, you need strict separation between industrial and residential in a big use like that. Building code would not actually allow, may not allow residential uses in the same building as some industrial uses. So like, it's a very different scope of what this is trying to achieve. Those are really caretaker, and if you're running a big business like that, where you've got shift work going on 24/7, you don't need somebody living there, that, it's a full-scale operation where the people are awake and need to be awake, monitoring the work going on in a 24-hour sort of environment. So it was definitely written to not allow residential units inside of an industrial or large commercial operation, because those are incompatible uses largely, especially when, under the consideration of the building code.
When I look at businesses, right, especially looking forward of how business has evolved, we're going to be a really tech-based planet, right? And people do different things on different continents all the time, whether you're trading equities, or commodities, or whatever it is. So when I look at like a limitation that, okay, well, somebody can live there, and then we're saying only five people, I wouldn't want to discourage a business where, okay, somebody has to live there, and they're like the grand poobah, so to speak, but they might have 10 people working there during the day. That would just limit them in their growth trajectory, and we're still accomplishing what we want to do. I guess my sticking point is on the number of people, especially if we're talking 3,000 square feet, that's decent size, mixed commercial, it's not nowhere near industrial. So, anyway, that's just some of my two cents of what I'm seeing, you know, on a day-to-day basis.
We could just remove that condition and just keep the size on the square footage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be like that, right? I mean, you know, it could be a down cycle in somebody, they only have a couple of people, but all of a sudden, somebody's Etsy website is kicking butt, and, you know, that's where they're at, and they need 10 people there during the day to pack things up. I mean, that's all I mean by that. But you're right, you're still limiting it to 3,000 square feet, and, you know, you're still going to be under residential, you know, guidelines if that's what you want to do. I mean, we're limiting that to 50%, so it's only a 1,500 square foot unit, which, nah, three bedrooms, three nice bedrooms, that's all you'd be looking at.
Nicole, have you seen limitations in other cities on employees?
Seattle did have the five non-residential.
Okay.
Employees.
Yeah, I thought we got that from somewhere.
That doesn't surprise me.
I guess you might have some problems with numbers if you had something like a delivery operation, where you had numerous trucks coming in and out. That's, that would be one concern. And they'd be employees, right?
Yeah, because it specifies workers or employees, that counts as delivery drivers. Yeah.
3,000 feet's big, too. It's a, that's a lot more than I envisioned. I mean, I was envisioning something that's probably at the biggest twice what two of silos is across the street, two of those together is about as big as I've ever seen live works, at least when we were following it up back in the, back in the, in 2003, 2004. So this is a new concept to me, going as big as 3,000. I mean, that's a house on top of a building, whereas the others were like one, two-bedroom units on top of, on top of a business. So, anyway.
You know, 3,000, when I'm looking at it, just even the dimensions on it, because I see 3,000 square foot buildings all the time, this would be a mixed commercial concept where the business is on that first floor, right? So all you have is a second floor on top of that, where you'd have the residential. A lot of times in our residence, people are doing business anyway. I mean, even in my own house, I have my own, one of the bedrooms is a full-on office, I mean. So, it's probably just an extension of that, and I don't think we want to limit that to say what you can do in the residential unit, right? I mean, somebody's free to, you know, whatever it is that they do, you know, let's say some kind of professional firm, architectural, you know, some kind of design firm, you know, people kind of work where they want to work.
Joe, and we jumped right into the discussion, we shouldn't forget about our RJ person.
No, no, we're not. You'll get our opportunity, that's right. This is just a good topic. Anyway, continue on, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I'm the one that started the problems here.
Okay, would you like me to just run down?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see. I'm not sure that we even started going down. Okay, so, "The commercial area function shall be limited to the first or main floor only of the live work unit. The commercial portion of the unit shall not exceed 50% of the area of the live work unit. All residential features must be designed and arranged to be separated from the commercial portion of the unit by a physical divider such as a wall or partition. Access shall be provided to the residential portion of the live work unit through the commercial portion."
So you could have doors in that wall or partition?
For fire access purposes and safety things. "The residential portion of the unit must be inhabited by the operator or an employee of the associated business." That's reiterating that you cannot lease those two separately. We've gone over this one, "Not more than five non-residential workers or employees are allowed to occupy the commercial area at any one time. The commercial and residential spaces cannot be leased separately from each other. The minimum size of the commercial portion of the unit shall not be less than 300 square feet." Kind of like what John was saying, we don't want a photo booth, call that a commercial use. Okay. "The maximum size of the commercial portion of the unit shall not exceed 3,000 square feet. The use of the commercial portion of the unit is limited to the permitted uses of the underlying zone in which the unit is located. Hazardous uses, storage, except accessory storage, up to 10% of the space dedicated to a permitted commercial use, and marijuana-growing, processing and/or retail are specifically prohibited uses in the commercial portion of the unit. The commercial portion of the unit shall be open to the public during business hours. The commercial portion of the unit shall not be occupied by residential use. The commercial portion of the unit must not contain any of the primary features of the residential portion of the live work unit, such as sleeping, laundry facilities, or bathrooms containing a shower or bathtub." I actually wanted to bring something up about this one, because there are certain types of uses that might incorporate a shower of sorts, like a gym, for example, if we wanted to talk about whether or not, whether or not showers should be included in that, if we should just say, "Your gym can't have a shower," something like that.
Or a dirty room.
It was just something I thought of.
Certain kinds of businesses.
Any gym would be like somebody's, if it's small, it would just be somebody's, like, personal training, maybe they'll have a spin class for five or 10 people, and it's not necessarily, they're not a gym, so to speak. That's the way we envision these things, that they'd be smaller, serving a smaller group, where you wouldn't provide a shower for 10 people that are just coming to do one activity. It's not like a gym where you go and work out during lunch, it'd be like, more like by appointment only for classes.
And it's personal trainers, they definitely do that, yeah. They definitely do that.
I agree, I agree with that. My granddaughters took kickboxing, and, you know, there was no shower or bath, it was just a bathroom.
All right, thank you.
The concern about allowing showers and laundry facilities is, now it just looks like a residential unit, and it makes it all that much easier for someone to move, you know, a resident into there when you start providing those things.
So you could not run a mini laundromat out of here?
Well, sure, you can, I suppose, but, you know, just no showers then. You can wash your clothes.
Well, what if you wanted to run a laundromat and you had showers, like day showers or something?
You just set it up as a commercial thing, I mean, a commercial washer.
So I was thinking you could tag on the end of this, number 13, unless it's part of the business, or something of that effect.
It just makes it really hard to enforce.
Right.
Again, you know, these are envisioned as small uses, operated by owner-operator type thing, you know, a laundromat wouldn't be something that would be envisioned in here. I suppose it could be, but that's not, we're, just by the nature of having it live and work, it's intended to limit the amount of work that really is allowed. You know, a small artisan coffee place, a cheese manufacturer that's open six hours a weekend.
Dencil cutters, those weaving machines, those kinds of businesses are live work.
So here's an example, okay, where you would have like laundry facilities. I have a client, Touch Factor Massage, okay, they had a house in Seattle, okay, so they had four practitioners downstairs. Joe Lavin, who was the owner, he lived upstairs, and, you know, he practiced as well, but, yeah, they needed showers, you know, clean towels and things like that. And when we looked for other commercial space, that was a factor in the decision whether we could take a space or not, because they needed private bathrooms and things like that, just throwing it out there. But it's not anything crazy at all, you're not going to have 50, wish you had 50 practitioners, that's just not happening.
No, you're right, like, even if it was a sole proprietor.
Yeah.
Doing a massage therapy, yeah, they go through laundry like crazy.
Yeah.
So, like, I appreciate the concept of maybe we do need to try to, it's just tough to try to address everything.
Oh, I got it, yeah, yeah.
And, well, you know, keeping the broader goal in mind.
If I might ask for a point of clarification here, kind of going off of what Commissioner Huggins said about the commercial square footage, if I'm understanding. Huggins said about the commercial square footage. If I'm understanding number nine, kind of going back to that correctly, so you could have a unit that was, a live work unit that was 6,000 square feet total, maximum, 3,000 on the bottom floor, maximum, commercial 3,000 top. That is fairly large. That is quite large. So you could do quite a few things in that. So I don't know if that's something, if we're talking smaller businesses, if that kind of is at odds with that.
3,000 does seem large.
Excessively so.
It's, it's large.
You definitely could change in that number.
Because unless it's increased, I recall the average house being around 2,000 square feet. So this is, that would even make a large house, so.
Is that when you paste this place off and see what, how big was it?
3,000 if we decide this one, I think.
This room is 3,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put it in perspective.
I mean, John's feet.
Yeah. I, I thought I measured ceiling tiles. Yeah, and I mean, these numbers are up for discussion. 3,000 is really big.
So what if you have an immigrant family, then they tend to live in a family structure, okay, that they have that 3,000 square feet downstairs, but there's family members that participate in the business as well. And let's say there's children, there's grandmothers, the whole family gets involved in stuff like that. I'll tell you right now, 3,000 square feet is just people not falling on top of one another.
Well, you know, what I, what I would say is, you know, these are, again, I'm going to sound like a broken record. These are intended to be smaller facilities, and if you have a family of 10, you probably shouldn't be living in a live work unit with two bedrooms above a thousand square foot building.
They do.
And then that's the way they choose to live. I'm not saying, I, I don't know that there's any wisdom to us allowing a 4,000 square foot residence above a, you know, even a 2,000 square foot live work unit. That, that seems beyond the scale of what the intent of what a live work unit is.
Okay, so then, I agree with you. I, I'm just throwing things out there, because I've just seen weird stuff, you know. So, we would want to go back to number two and modify that calculation of the living area based upon a percentage of the square footage of the commercial section that we currently have at 3,000 square feet. So, maybe we just say the living area can't exceed 25%, which brings you down to 1,500 square feet, which is fair. I mean, that's not a huge house, and a couple people can, can live there. So those are the modifications we need to make. Yeah, would this be a good time to let our Scarlett to have some comments here as we've gone down this list, because I have a couple other questions as well, and I don't want to delay her. What do you think?
You're the chair.
Okay. Scarlett, you have the floor. Please introduce yourself again.
It's Scarlett.
Scarlett, I thought I heard, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you. Yes, my name is Scarlett Ponder. I am here representing the RJ Group, which we are a local development company, and want to say thank you to John Coleman for reaching out to us to, for this opportunity to provide comment. We, like, he mentioned we've spent a significant amount of time already developing a live work product. We hope to incorporate this in a future development in Seadro. And we do believe that a live work code amendment will be beneficial for both the city as well as developers by providing clearer guidance and expectations for these live work products, as long as the revisions are within reason and appropriately applied. So we are really glad that the, that this amendment is being brought, and we do hope that this feed, the feedback we're providing to will just, yeah, make, enable the commission planning staff to make code that will make sense for everyone. So here are our comments. So first off, I'll just say, so per chapter 17.04, .030, for the following conditions, we don't have any comment. We think they're pretty standard. And basically, 1 through 7, 9 and 10, 12 and 14, all of those we think are fine, as is, I mean, if you wanted to tweak them more, but, but we have nothing to add for those. And we don't have any comments regarding the parking requirements. As, it seems like they're pretty much adopting the mixed commercial parking requirement, so those also, we have no comment on those. The conditions that we do have comments on, so again, these are from the chapter 17.04, .030, the, the definition of live work and the conditions listed under. So number eight, minimum size of the commercial portion of the unit shall not be less than 300 square feet. We agree that it's standard and prudent to set a minimum square footage. In our own experience and based on our own designs, we believe a minimum of 250 square foot would be sufficient. That's our only comment on that one. For condition 11, the commercial portion of the unit shall be open to the public during business hours. We believe this provision is unnecessary. Think business owners should be able to govern their own business hours. Also, there are certain commercial uses that may operate by appointment only, or they may be a remote administrative office for a larger business, in which case there'd be no need for, to have open business hours if it's an internal office for a larger employer and this is a employee working remotely for a larger company and using it as an administrative office space or remote location. So we think that this, this requirement could be restrictive to these types of businesses that would otherwise be allowable in the zoning code. And, you know, furthermore, there's already code existing that would protect, protect residents from noxious uses, so I don't think there's any danger of a nuisance by not setting specific business hours. So basically, we think that this requirement is unnecessary, redundant, and could even be overly restrictive. Then for condition 13, the commercial portion of the unit must not contain any of the primary features of the residential portion of the live work unit, such as sleeping, laundry facilities, or bathrooms containing a shower or bathtub. I would just agree with the suggestion that in some cases laundry facilities or even a shower might be actually needed for the, for an allowable business use. For example, if you had a massage therapist-
Yeah, I agree.
-who wanted to be able to allow their clients to shower after, or, you know, to be able to launder towels or things. Again, I just think that there's already, the condition 12 already explicitly prohibits residential use in that space, so I think this extra condition is unnecessary, and again, could be overly restrictive for some types of businesses. Condition 15, live work units shall include an exterior sign with the name of the associated business. The sign shall be clearly associated with the unit and visible to pedestrians from the public right away. Similar to the business hours, basically on this one, we recommend replacing shall with may. We do think it's a good idea to allow for a business sign in cases where it makes sense, but again, there may be cases where it's an administrative office for a remote business, in which case a sign would be unnecessary, or say you have a psychotherapist who accepts clients by appointment only, and they may not want to advertise or encourage public walk-ins. Again, there may be several allowable commercial types that it wouldn't make sense to have an exterior sign. So, in this case, we think it makes sense to allow it, but not to require it. For condition 16, both residential and commercial rates will apply for permitting and monthly city utility billing purposes. RJ Group does not object to this amendment. We just want to note that I, we, we still think developers will need some additional transparency and guidance from city staff as to specifically how the permitting and utility bills will be calculated for live work units. We do support the creation and use of a building permit application that is specific to live work units, just to provide a lot of clarity upfront for developers building this product. Next, conditions 17 and 18. The owner of a live work unit shall sign and submit a live work agreement to the planning department attesting that they will comply with all applicable live work requirements and regulations, and that the commercial portion will not be used for any residential storage or other non-compliant uses. The agreement shall be provided by the director. And 18, upon sale of the property, the new owner shall be required to sign and submit a new live work agreement to the planning department for approval. The RJ Group recommends that conditions 17 and 18 be stricken from this amendment. Not only do we find these conditions highly unusual and not typical of live work or land use code in general, we also believe they place undue burden on owners and potential buyers. There may be several buyers who would not wish to sign such an agreement, and the condition could also create difficulties in the lending process as lenders may not be familiar with an agreement of this nature between a private party and a municipal department. Then the owners could also face similar difficulties when they decide to resell their property. So basically, we believe this, this places some undue restrictions and burdens on potential buyers. It could even reduce the pool of interested buyers, which could in turn negatively impact the property values. So, overall, this, this is the, really, these are the conditions we feel the most strongly about of everything here. Just that, all, there's already other conditions and codes that govern the, and limit the allowable uses for the commercial space. So I think requiring an agreement of the owner is unnecessary, and we really urge the, the commission to, yeah, that this should be stricken altogether from this amendment. Finally, condition 20, it says a maximum of 40% of the total building floor area of all buildings within a commercial development may be, may be designated for live work. The RJ Group would like to better understand the reasoning behind this condition. I think, hearing John's comments earlier, I, it sounds like this may be in the same vein of wanting to encourage predominantly commercial use rather than too heavily residential, which is understandable. We do believe that 40% is very low, so we suggest that 60% might be a more appropriate percentage. We also anticipate the wording of this might be confusing, where it says within a commercial development. The wording in this condition makes it unclear if live work units could only be applied for if they are a part of a larger commercial development. And it seems the condition doesn't allow a developer flexibility to build live work units as a standalone project, which again, could limit the flexibility of development within the zone. So, we suggest that either this condition be stricken from the amendment, or to reword the condition to indicate that in any development, which includes live work units, a maximum of 60% of the total building floor area of all buildings shall be designated for live work, and that live work units could also be developed as a standalone project within the zone. And with that, that concludes our comments. And again, I, I thank John and the planning department for allowing us an opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So it would now be a time that I can open it up to the planning commission, because I have a whole lot of comments on a whole bunch of things myself. And Pat, how about I start down on my left-hand side here and have you take it off, and we'll work our way, work our way down?
Well, I've, I, I've made the comments based on what I, what I know from when we did it before, and I'm open to, to changes. So I'm still digesting what Scarlett has said, but some of them seem quite reasonable. So anyway, I'm, I'm still digesting, Joe.
Okay. Danielle?
I'm still thinking about it.
Commissioner Cock?
The only thing I have to say is, Ms. Ponder, although I, I get your logic on number 15, I think what'll happen with some of these units is, since staff won't have time to, or the resources to see whether, you know, who's living where and whatever, that if there are complaints, people in the neighborhood won't know what this thing is. I get, you know, where do I go to complain? I'm seeing, you know, cars coming in and there's weird things that I don't understand. So that would, to me, the sign makes some sense, though I see that those exceptions could be a real problem for individual practitioners. But giving the people who live in the neighborhoods, to me, some sense of what is going on and where they could go to complain, because, you know, city staff isn't going to be going door to door. And, you know, a lot of people live inside the cities, including me, because some of the zoning out in the county is a little frightening, quite frankly, of what you could have right next to you. So, that, that's my only point on number 15.
You know, to add into that, that's exactly what I was thinking as well, because there's confusion, right? If you have a live to work, you, you do have a residential component. So all of a sudden, the neighbor's there and they're like, hey, wait a second, how can they do that? So it's set, and we're not telling them what kind of sign they need to put out, okay? It could be something really innocuous, but the fact that it exists identifies exactly what type of use is going on in that particular property. So thank you, that was one of my comments. Commissioner Fournette, we'll head to you.
I'll add to that a little bit more. I think somewhere in this proposal, it talked about the reason you wanted the signage was to attract more attention, to bring more people into the city to utilize this new. In other words, you wanted people to know what was going on and advertise what we had here. So that was, I think, your reasoning for shall have the sign. Do we have any examples of live work in the city right now?
Cross Street.
That's the only one?
Also, the, the north end, Haynes Street at Moore, or actually, it's, is it Central at Moore? There's two of them that are built together. They face Haynes Central. It faces Central Street, and it's one, one unit in from the, from Highway 20.
So, that's actually, that's actually a mixed commercial. So, a mix, a mixed use.
Oh, it doesn't have a living unit above? I thought it-
It has two apartments above, but they're, they're just strictly apartments over commercial.
Well, that's a live work.
So, except, no, because those residential units upstairs could just be rented out completely independent of all of the commercial below.
That we could do eight max?
There's, there's no, there's no requirement in those that whoever lives upstairs is connected to the business downstairs.
Okay.
That's just strictly two apartments above two commercial spaces.
I didn't think about it. I just looked at them and said, oh, live works.
And so there's a slightly different building code applied to it. There's no connection between the spaces, whereas these, in a live work, there is a connection required between the, the residential and the downstairs commercial industrial. So-
It's a difference, I just-
It, it is, it is barely a difference, but it is a difference.
Yeah, okay. And, and we could do eight units max per building. Eight residential units, as long as there's commercial on the bottom.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is trying to occupy a, a, a different area, and maybe Scarlett can speak to this is, you know, at one point, the RJ Group explained to us that they were pursuing live work units because there's a different- work units because there's a different funding mechanism through the banks than if they were to just build commercial storefront down below and build, you know, eight units above. Do you, do you want to speak to that, Scarlett?
Um, well, I'm afraid I can't speak very much to the specifics of that. I have, our, our financial officer probably knows more the specifics of the lending. But that, that is consistent with what I've heard from my, my coworkers in terms of, because a live work is a resident, again, residential with the commercial as a secondary use, it does open up more funding opportunities for lenders, perhaps, who are more interested in funding residential projects than commercial.
Right.
I could probably get some additional feedback on that and send it to you, John, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that, that, that might be. You know, and in this style, the, you, you can condominiumize each commercial and residential portion and thus get, you know, somebody to be able to buy each residential unit and the, and the associated commercial. In a mixed-use building where it's commercial below and residential above, it would be a different kind of condo. You wouldn't own the land. It would be like a typical condo where you just own a space inside the walls of a building. These other ones would be more like you're buying a parcel of land below. So there are nuanced differences, but there are differences that apparently affect the financing of developers. So that is, that is why the live work has had some interest lately, whereas the, you know, straight commercial below and the, with the residential apartments above is less desirable to developers.
Okay, so it's my turn. So we have actually quite a bit of experience in something similar to this when we just did our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, because I'm really not seeing a whole bunch of, you know, foundational differences. So the first thing I'm asking is, is it going to be owner occupied, in essence, these live work units, or do we have the ability that an investor can come in and buy them and lease them? Like, right now, with our ADUs, the owner literally needs to live on site before you can have the ADU. So I would look to tighten up that right there, where people just can come in and buy a building, and now they're leasing it as an apartment to somebody that wants to operate their business.
And that's where conditions seventeen and eighteen come in.
We're going to talk about that in a minute. Yeah, I, I got to get down there. Which I'm, I'm agreeing with how this is written, not agreeing with what was said here earlier. We're just going to agree to disagree.
Maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's worth mentioning for seventeen and eighteen, those are the ones that require the, the owner of a live work unit shall sign and submit a live work agreement to the planning department attesting that they'll comply with the applicable live work requirements and regulations and that the commercial portion will not be used for any residential storage or noncompliant uses.
That's why we're at the ADU, yeah.
That, that's very similar to how we wrote our ADUs. And actually, that language is taken largely from Tacoma's requirements, where they actually go a step further and require a live work agreement license that you have to apply for before you can convert or build a live work unit. We seem to like, we, we felt like that was more regulation than we felt necessary to get a license just to, before you can occupy it. So what we did was require that whoever owns it acknowledge that they're aware of what the rules are, just like we did with the ADUs. They must sign an agreement saying that they acknowledge what the regulations are. So, you know, maybe agreement's not the best word. It could be a live work acknowledgement. Just, we want whoever owns it to know and have it in writing in front of them that, and they, and they sign off saying, yes, we're aware that there are limitations here. So if there's ever a compliance issue down the road where, you know, somebody's, you know, using their downstairs portion just as storage, you know, their garage, basically, for the living space upstairs, and we say, you know, that, that's, that's not allowed. You know, this is either commercial or vacant, is, you know, the only way we see possible to regulate it. If the planning commission's got any other ideas of how to encourage the, it actually, the, the commercial space to be actually used for commercial or industrial, if you're in the industrial zone, and allowed use in, in that downstairs space, you know, we're open to that. This was our best, our best foot forward in making sure that these areas aren't just used ancillary to the residential.
Well, this is why that's important, and it comes back to what was said earlier. These are positive things from a lender's standpoint. I'll tell you flat on out, what they're going to look at when they're financing a space is now they have a known aspect of that loan that is going to generate income to pay that loan. So that's a real positive thing from a lending standpoint. And as this becomes a lot more common, and I believe it's going to become even more common, especially after COVID, that people can learn to do different businesses and live in the same structure. We're going to see more of that, but I haven't seen any pushback from any lenders. As a matter of fact, they like the fact, especially if it's already an established business, that they're just moving spaces that they can now occupy as well as run their, their business out of. So I'm going to get down to that in a minute. So on to number eight, okay? If it's live work and we're saying three hundred, two fifty, regardless of what the number is, how could you even do a live unit if we're saying now twenty-five percent of three hundred square feet? I mean, that's not even a prison cell. So that doesn't even make any sense on any of that. So maybe we should have like, okay, we have a minimum on the, on the commercial side. However, you can't have the live side unless it has a certain number. Let's say, you know, whatever number we come up with as a percentage of that commercial space before you can even do a living unit. Right? I mean, think about that. If we, if you brought it to even three hundred or two fifty, and you bring it down to twenty-five percent.
I was just looking at transformer units the other night on, on a show, and just talking about transformer units, the minimum, the minimum size, basically, that you can build a unit and live in it is about a hundred and thirty square feet.
Ooh.
Because you have to have all of the stuff you need to do. Two fifty is really easy if you have, if you have transformer units, meaning like beds that drop down out of the ceiling on a motor, or walls, you know, beds that fold down out of the side and stuff. So it's totally doable that you would have a two hundred and fifty square foot space, and then above you have a two hundred and fifty square foot living, living unit, if you've got a young person who wants to build this, all the, you know, wants to buy or build-
No, agree. I had a shed that was twenty by ten. You're absolutely right. However, we're basing it on a percentage of the commercial unit. So there's got to be a minimum size of the commercial unit, that whatever number we come up with on the living unit, whether it's two hundred and fifty feet or whatever it is.
I thought they were fifty, fifty fifty. They have to be fifty percent commercial, fifty percent living unit. So if it's two fifty for the commercial, it's two fifty for the residential.
Well, what you guys were saying, that if you have three thousand square feet on the bottom, okay, you'd have another three thousand on the top, and you didn't like that. We were talking about bringing that, that percentage down, something, you know, we're not done with this yet, but, but this is all where these calculations come on in.
Right. No, I was just, I, I was just saying that three thousand's too big. So I would say fifteen hundred is, is big, top end, and then your unit above is fifteen hundred, and that's a two-bedroom house in most neighborhoods.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Not to disrupt your train of thought, but just a comment on that. So twenty-five percent also would be difficult, just because if you're talking bottom floor is commercial only, as we show here, you'd have to have a smaller unit on top in order i- if you didn't do the fifty fifty. So that's all I was thinking. It would have to be stepped back or something if, if you were trying to do a different.
I was just looking at that minimum two fifty on the commercial, and what could you possibly do on top? That was it.
I think decreasing the maximum square footage would probably be the easiest.
I'm almost done, by the way. So on to number eleven. I, I agree with you. You're, you're right. It could be a, a business that's appointment only. But as long as there's a sign there, right, you know there is a business there, and a lot of businesses do that. So open to the public. Yeah, let's talk about that a little bit more. Number fifteen, that's back to that signage, that somebody should know what's going on there. Now seventeen and eighteen, I, you know, I respectfully agree to disagree. I, I don't see any problem, because this is what we did on our ADU side, that it enforces an owner occupancy. Okay? It's not going to be a leasehold type of situation where independent investors that are not invested in this community just come in and buy stuff, and it's just a landlord tenant situation where, okay, you got a place to sleep as well as a place to run, run your business. And we've beat this up quite a bit on the ADU side. So people can add in whatever they want to add in. I kind of like the structure that we have here for a whole bunch of reasons that I won't bring up now. But that, that, that's pretty much on where I see a lot of commonality on a foundational level on how we want this stuff to work. I'm done. Anyone else?
Just, just one thought. I might have brought this up last time, but if a person opens a commercial business, they're living upstairs, and the business fails, do they get booted out?
Well, if they're an owner, you know, they still have a mortgage, so they still have, you know, a loan on the, the property. So if anybody would take over, it would be whoever owns the loan, right? And then they have to resell it, like anything else. And whoever's going to buy it would have to be another owner operator, right?
So we don't have a requirement that the commercial space be occupied. So in a situation like that, they could still live upstairs. The downstairs would just have to be vacant, because we don't want it just becoming their garage, their storage area, which would encourage them to move on and encourage, you know, another business owner to take over the property, which is the intent of the mixed commercial zone, is not to be a place of residence, but a place of business with residence as a secondary use. I, I'm, I'm going to beat that theme to death through this, is that this is commercial first, residential second.
But you're right, though. It's the lender in a situation like that, if they're defaulting on a loan, they're the ones that are going to have to sell it.
Well, let's say there's no default on any loan. It's just the business fails, the guy's still making his payments for his mortgage.
Okay.
Now, and then his next-door neighbor is the same, and then the next one, now you've got like a whole row of papered-over windows with people living upstairs.
Back to what John just said.
Well, what you're making a case for is just to not even allow these.
Well, I'm just saying, is there a mechanism?
You know, and at some point, you know, if, if the planning commission thinks that, you know what, these are more trouble than they're worth, you know, that could be a recommendation, too. I, I'm not suggesting that, you know, we're trying to work with what we have.
Yeah.
But you, but you can see, the more you think about it, the more you're like, yeah, we either need to have some serious regulations on this to make sure that it's used as commercial, or maybe, maybe we just don't allow them because they're more trouble than they're worth.
You know, this is a great outline, and that's just the, the way things are going, especially as we evolve as a society as to how we actually, you know, make a living. So no, this is really important stuff. But one thing I forgot, though, I do agree with you on thirteen, to strike the sleeping out of, because it's back to that massage therapy thing that I gave an example of earlier. So yeah, you're going to need to laundry facilities and potentially bathrooms containing a shower, at least a shower. But sleeping facilities, yeah, that, that's not what the intent is. But you will have businesses that have that as laundry and a shower.
You might want to consider, include bathtub. What about a dog washing operation?
There you go. Yeah.
Then I might suggest that they put a dog washing station and not a bathtub.
Dirty dogs, done dirt cheap, right down the street here.
And that's not to be flippant. It's, it's a way, like, that would be an allowed use as a dog washing station, whereas bathtubs are for human use.
I get it. I get it.
A structure that holds water. Okay.
Think about that. Don't, don't go there.
I might, I might be talking before, I think, but if, if you have employees, wouldn't they need a break room with sink?
Yeah.
And maybe a chair to sit in?
Very much so, yeah.
So it might be a kitchen-looking thing.
And they are. That's exactly how they are. That's exactly how they are. Yep. Yeah. They're a break room. Yeah. You got refrigerators, dishwashers, sinks.
Well, that, that's, that's not, that's not one of the things that are precluded.
Right.
Okay.
So you're not allowed sleeping laundry facilities or bathrooms containing a bath, a shower or bathtub.
Okay, so you can have break room kitchen thing, yeah.
And unfortunately, the reason I wrote this in there, we wrote this in there, is we have problems with people trying to make commercial space just into residential. And, you know, we don't, there's nothing that says you can't have a bathtub or laundry facility in a commercial space. And so they build a commercial space, and it just, it's a residential unit. And so now we have to keep an eye on them to make sure that it's being used as residential unit, used as a commercial instead of residential. And-
And it happens.
We just don't want, we just don't want to have to do that.
And it happens. Absolutely, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Ran into three situations like that in the past six months. Exactly. Yeah.
Would there be any benefit to specifying for number thirteen that a commercial sink, you know, there, there's different specifications for some of that stuff. Of course, you could still use it for residential, as you couldn't really prevent that, sort of not having one at all. But, you know, as, at, to your point, with the dog washing station versus a bathtub, you know, different purpose. Same with commercial washing machines versus residential. Then at least the intent is more, obviously, for the commercial use.
Like, for instance, like the massage therapy. It's just a regular washing machine. It's not like the commercial washing machines are, are just for a, a bigger scale, where this is just like, you know, you might have five or six towels that need to get done for these small businesses.
Well, in that case, they can just do them upstairs and bring them down. It's not that difficult. So, because they have a washer and dryer upstairs, so.
Can I ask Scarlett a question?
She's there.
Can you hear me, Scarlett? Have, I might have missed this part, but have you guys produced these live work buildings elsewhere?
Um, we have not constructed them elsewhere. We've, yeah, we, we have some designs that we've been working on, but it haven't, we were, yeah, the short answer is no. We've been, we'd been in the design process and learned of this code coming to, being reviewed. And because we had started design process before, we had more feedback about what design requirements, what might be, we thought it was prudent to put a pause on that project until we learned more about what the, those code requirements would be.
Okay. Thank you.
But all the stuff that we were talking about, that you were talking about, don't have anything to do with the design of the unit. I mean, I'd love to see what you guys have sketched up, you know, now to give us an idea to see what kind of product you'll get out there. But you had a bunch of different topics here that, that really weren't design-related outside of that two fifty to three hundred square feet, unless I missed something.
I, yeah, I don't know how to respond to that. This is just based on our experience. You know, we, obviously, we consulted with our own marketing people, real estate marketing people as well. So this is the feedback that's informed by our experience and what we know in the field. So for whatever, to whatever extent that's limited or useful.
Well, while we have you here, Scarlett, do you guys have any idea in terms of your design process and stuff, how, what, what the maximum size of a live work is? I mean, what, what are your limits of, as designers, of what a, a live work would be?
Um, the design that we were working on, the- Um, the design that we were working on, the work portion of the units, I think we're coming out to somewhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred square foot for the work portion. And then the residential portion was, gosh, I'm pulling numbers from my head, but I want to say it was somewhere between fifteen hundred to two thousand square foot. They're three-bedroom units. We're kind of designing to be family units with a, that would have a work, you know, portion on the ground floor.
So it's opposite to what we're specing here whereby we want more commercial space versus the residential space?
Yes, we, again, at the time, we had no particular criteria to go off of. So we were basing it on the size of unit. We thought that would be the most marketable. There's been a growing demand for, you know, a lot of, yeah, we basically were basing it on the market conditions that existed at the time. We were designing it, not having much else to go off of.
Scarlett, wouldn't that be a really small business, two hundred and fifty square feet? I mean, did you guys?
Yeah, I mean, we're seeing it as like a small office space, small, like, again, we're thinking very small-scale, one-to-two-person-operated, like, yeah, just kind of a, like you said, an Etsy business or a
Oh, I see.
Small, like, yeah, we are really picturing more small-scale stuff like that. And this is in the mixed commercial area, not the industrial zone. So we were not anticipating any kind of industrial uses.
So I could see a situation where, if you were on the edge of the industrial zone, on either side of it, but on the, probably on the industrial side of the line, where you could have a facility in the industrial zone that is bigger, you know, five thousand, ten thousand square feet, but you have a live-work unit, which is the home for the caretaker or the owner of the business, they wanted to live there, and maybe just one facet of the larger business. So then you're right there, almost onsite to oversee your thing, and that would not break the rules, right? And I don't see where there'd be a problem with that, as long as you have some facet of the larger business in the
Well, I mean, it would need, you know, there would need to be industrial space on the main floor of whatever unit, but it could be a smaller space, you know, administrative office part of it or something.
Also, say you have a, you know, you're building boxes, say your factory builds boxes or shapes boxes or whatever like that, and you have a labeling thing as well, and so the labeler is in your live-work unit and you live up there, but your box factory's in the industrial zone as just an industrial production. That's not it.
Sounds okay to me.
Yeah, okay.
What about you?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay.
So just two comments. On the signage thing, the only time I can really think that not having signage on a business would somehow, or that having it would be detrimental is in the case that we encountered in Mount Vernon where a hospital or medical office wanted to keep their records and acquired a building for that. And they did not want signage on it because they don't want people knowing that there's sensitive information in a building that could get broken into. But otherwise, signage, based on what we're looking at here, makes sense to me to require that. I mean, that's just one. I'm sure there are some other businesses that, for whatever reason, would not want to have signage, but most of them, it's nice to know, as was pointed out, for the neighbors, what's going on there, so.
Could there be an exception process built in that, in what you talked about, the medical records or what Scarlett talked about with the, you know, the psychologists, that they could say, hey, you know, we want an exception? I mean, they'd be rare, but it'd be up to the planning department.
Well, I mean, the signage doesn't need to say, like, records stored here. It would say, like, United General Hospital Administrative Building or something. If it was a psychologist, you know, who is sensitive to, you know, what kind of, you know, that it's a psychiatry office, they could just say, you know, Dr. so-and-so's office.
Could just be a logo even, right?
Yeah. The important thing is to indicate that this is a commercial space to not only the people that are looking to find the use, but to reinforce that this is a commercial neighborhood. It's not a residential neighborhood. It is a commercial neighborhood that allows ancillary residential use. So that is why signage is, you know, that's why we included signage as so imperative.
I like the transparency, and anybody new moving into the neighborhood, it'd be pretty clear.
That they're moving into a live-work neighborhood, you mean?
Yeah. Well, you could be right next to a live-work unit, right? Still be residential, right?
I mean, the simple matter that it's zoned, mixed commercial could really temper the use of these as residential uses and should. We, this is not really related, but we have property owners who have, like, a single-family house that's now in a neighborhood that's saying mixed commercial. They have problems selling their home because banks won't loan to buyers of non-conforming use or if there's any commercial associated. So somebody moving into a live-work unit, it's not a residential unit. It's a mixed. It's both commercial and residential. So the lending is going to be different. It's not going to be, if you try to market this to a person with a conventional residential loan, they're going to be very frustrated because their bank's going to say, well, no, we can't loan on that because it's, that's not a residential building. It's a commercial, partial commercial, and so you need a commercial loan. So there are complicating factors, and some banks behave differently than others. And banking policies change over time. Like, this didn't used to be such a problem fifteen years ago, but after the market meltdown in, you know, two thousand nine or so, now we're seeing, like, people are unable to buy houses that are in a commercial zone because you can't get a, you can't get a resident, you can use a residential loan to buy something in commercial property.
And that would be correct, by the way, because they're attached. However, if you have a property that you have a regular, single-family residence and directly next to it that used to be part of the same parcel has been operated as a commercial business kicking out five thousand bucks a month, the banks love it because it's guaranteed income to pay whatever the mortgage is on top of the existing mortgage. I have a situation like that right now where the person that bought the four-bedroom is already cash flow positive by twelve hundred bucks a month because of the business that was right next door. And it's because the zone was changed, where in the past it was, I got kind of mixed commercial and then they made it residential, but it's a non-conforming use. But in this particular case, the bank used it as additional income and they were good to go. Anyway, I'm digressing. We could talk about this all night, because I love talking about this stuff anyway. So does anybody have anything else? I guess we're just going to rework things.
Well, what I, I think what staff would like before we shut down for the night is, under number nine, excuse me, a little tick in my throat, where it says the maximum size of the commercial portion of the unit shall not exceed three thousand square feet. There's been a lot of discussion about that tonight. If the planning commission wanted to revise that number, let us know, and then we can go back and we can rework the other portions, like number twenty, where it says maximum forty percent of the total building floor area. I agree, after rereading that, I agree with Scarlett. It's at least unclear what that means. So we can address that. But we could also address number two might need to change, and there was a, there might be, there might be something else that changes based on the feedback on minimum and maximum size. So we'll look into all of that.
What about the two fifty? I mean, what's the difference between two fifty and three hundred feet minimum?
That was for, she was proposing that the two fifty to three hundred was more for a project where the residential portion would be fifteen hundred square feet, and you would only require two hundred and fifty square feet for a business where our calculation is the exact opposite. And then to add on to that, the calculations we come up with, that's where twenty's got to be reworked because we're talking about floor area. So those are numbers that whatever we do on those upper numbers need to play into that, whatever that is as well. They all need to balance out.
Yeah, we really need to, we really need to relook at
I get it. No, no.
At twenty, they're, I'm not even sure what it's trying to address, frankly, and we wrote it, so. So clearly needs, the intent of that to be clarified.
Yeah, the calculations just need to add up to whatever it is that we're doing there, especially when you're looking at now the entire development. And if we're going to do a floor area ratio, that's a different animal.
Well, like, for example, the Tacoma regulation say new construction can contain no more than twenty units. So that's, say, if there was to be a development, they wouldn't require more, they wouldn't allow more than twenty units in that development or any additions to it.
Right. That's units. This is saying floor area. That's a different, that's a different animal. Right? Same, X amount of units. That's totally different than what we're saying here.
Yeah, and we don't do floor area calculations. We don't have definitions for that. So we may need to, we're going to look at that carefully.
This is a good first cut. It really is.
Let's get back to number nine, though. Just trying to keep us focused on one small thing that we can address, and then we can spiderweb out from that and try to capture the other issues that are created by that. So the planning commission was discussing lowering that number from three thousand based on the new information, like, what size maximum was the planning commission thinking? I had heard fifteen hundred. Is that where the planning commission wants to go?
I think what I heard was that we're basing the residential portion on that three thousand. The three thousand number on the commercial side, I personally don't have a problem with. What we're saying is the residential unit shouldn't be three thousand. It should be scaled back to a different percentage of that three thousand. Is that correct?
I'm saying that if we're fifty-fifty, the live-work, or residential and commercial or industrial, whatever you're putting in there,
Okay.
the smallest should be two fifty for each, and the upper limit should be fifteen hundred for each. That's me personally. That's what I'd like to see. It's really simple. Fifty-fifty. Two hundred and fifty is the minimum for both, and fifteen hundred's the max for both. Just as a start, because we can always tweak it at some point if somebody wants to do something bigger or whatever. But it sounds like the smallest is probably going to be that two fifty number.
But we don't have to go as low as two fifty. That is really small.
And here's the problem. There's no lot sizes of that size anywhere in the city. Right? Think about it. It's going to be based upon the lot size where you're building it.
Well, you could put multiple. I mean, what did Silas do over here with his?
They're all separate, independent.
And how did that happen? Did he break up the property into chunks?
Yeah, yeah.
So you break the property up into chunks and you build what you think will sell, and so.
That's a different type of zone, though.
There are six lots there, and we didn't have these requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, it can be done. It's just.
It can. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm for possibilities. That's.
And we can how that would work, actually.
So what I'm hearing is, you know, under number nine, we should change the largest commercial to fifteen hundred square feet. Do I see some nodding in agreement?
Yep. I'm okay with that.
Commercial, commercial, maximum commercial fifteen hundred square feet.
If our goal is what you envisioned, then yes. But what if somebody in the industrial park has a three thousand square foot boat-building operation and they want to live upstairs?
Then I kind of think that this isn't really, I don't think that's what we want. I don't think we want people living above a fiberglass facility.
Well, aluminum. I was thinking of the ones over there at the, next to Shark Engines. You know, they got the boat builders along there. I'm sure they all sleep there all night, anyway. But, oops, I spilled the beans. I'm just trying to think of all aspects of this, what you're trying to do. If you want it exactly how you have it envisioned, then yes, fifteen hundred feet and a fifteen hundred square foot residence makes sense. But other people may have an existing business that they want to apply to put a residence in, and it's not going to work. But maybe that doesn't matter.
Every housing and business choice is not for everybody. I mean, we just went through this with the breweries and the brew pubs and stuff. When your brew pub gets to a certain size, it just needs to go into the industrial area and do the thing. And it's the same with this, you know, if you, if you, like, you have a huge family, like you guys were talking about earlier, or you've got extended in-laws and stuff that's coming up, I mean, you need all that space. This really, live-work isn't really your cup of tea. It's not what you're interested in, yeah.
I was trying to think of too many options, and I shouldn't.
If you drive a Ford three fifty, you don't live in wildflower.
Right.
You've been up there? That's what those garages are for.
And speaking of, so this basically doesn't allow for garages, then, because the bottom floor has to be commercial, so it would be basically open or street part? Well, they have to provide onsite parking, correct? Where do they provide it?
Well.
A garage could be considered part of the commercial space. It's a commercial space or an industrial space. You don't have garages.
Right.
Yeah, but you could still put a garage if you have a delivery business, where you want to store your stuff. And let, here's an example of, somebody just ran into recently, they're electricians. They got twelve vans. They're really afraid of things getting broken into, so the requirements are that those need to be put inside or in a fenced facility, all that kind of stuff. So there are small businesses that
That's the part of the business use of the business.
We didn't say about parking your cars, so.
Well, and that's kind of my point, is that we may need to have some guidelines in there that address that because how do you keep them from parking their personal vehicles in there or where?
That's a fine line. Here's why. People have those magnetic things that they could just throw on their thing. So they pull it off when they go to the soccer game.
I'm a pizza delivery car during the day.
There you go. They stick on dominos.
So to that point, John, I did have a question. So it specifies that up to fifty percent commercial, bottom floor only, we don't really say anything about, unless I overlooked it, kind of that iffy gray area where you might have some commercial in your upstairs, like have your home office upstairs. Is that something we're not worried about? Because the focus is on commercial?
Yeah, we're not really worried about home office.
Okay.
People have home offices in every home in America now.
Yeah.
Including me.
That's not really what a live-work is.
Yeah.
And Scarlett had mentioned things like administrative offices for, you know, remote, you know, that's just a home office. That's not a live-work. So that's not particularly what this is intended to be. You know, these are, live-work are intended to be places where you do communicate with the public because it's commercial property, mixed commercial property. But there is some fuzziness there, like, not all uses that are allowed in the mixed commercial zone are, you know, someplace where that requires, that allows walk-ins. So, I don't want to So I, I don't want to belabor that issue.
No, that, that's fine. I just, when I was looking at the policies from the comp plan that were used to kind of justify this, that last one policy, H 5.2 seemed to me to be more to do with residences that have a home oc or a home business rather than this sort of situation. So I was a little confused. So that's why I wanted to clarify.
Did you want to speak to that?
Sorry, I was writing something. Can you repeat that, Daniel?
Oh, so the last policy there before, on. Oh gosh, page five of the memo, right before the proposal review process. Policy H 5.2. Just allow permits for home businesses that have li- little impact on surrounding developments. That, that confused me a little bit because I didn't think that live work units would necessarily just would refer to that. So that's why I wanted some clarification.
Yeah, we may, we may have stretched the, the policy a little far on that one.
Because to me, that's not an in-home business. This is a commercial with a residential component.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree.
And, and they would be required to get a business license for, obviously for the commercial part of it. So even if you had a little bit of spillover to your home office upstairs, we, that wouldn't be an issue from that aspect either.
And that's one thing that we're also looking into is like through the, through the business license process, you know, enforcing some, you know, making sure that people are doing a business. Now, that logic's a little bit. I don't know. I'm not sure if it quite works out. Because if somebody has a business license, then they have a business. What we're trying to do is make sure that people have businesses in there. If they don't have a business license, you know, maybe we use the business license regulations to check to make sure that people have businesses. And if they don't, then we go have a conversation with them.
I was going to bring that up versus the signing, signage, because for the same reason, whether, whether you should be required to have a sign or not. I mean, if, if you're, you know, if Pat Huggins has, you know, suddenly got a cabinet shop in his garage on Haynes Street and everybody's going to say, you know, hey, Huggins over there on 210 is running his saws all the time and you guys are over there in a minute trying to figure out why I'm running a commercial business on my property. So you don't really need a sign. You just need somebody to complain and say, guy at 210 or whatever. You see what I'm saying? Because you have all, and you have all the information through the business licenses. Everybody's supposed to have a, a business license. And you know what's stored on their property? If there's anything toxic stored on the property and how many employees are on the property? And I fill those out every year. So you have everything you need right there to know what's going on in a, in a building, whether it's signed or not.
So we need to rat out every Amway dealer and eBayer. I hear you.
It ultimately comes down to what will neighbors tolerate and, and, you know, in a, in a mixed commercial or a, or an industrial edge. Probably it's quite a bit, but it's, you know, complaint driven, right? If something's oozing out of your garage door, you're going to go call the, you're going to call the city. If, if somebody's making noise at four in the morning really loud and you can actually, it actually bothers you in that zone, then you're going to say something about it. Otherwise, nobody's going to say anything about it or care.
And, and to that point, I, I thought it was an interesting point that RJ Group brought up about the work hours. What exactly was our logic behind that? Was it to limit the noise and the disruption? Or was it more to ensure that there is actually a business running there and people can go in? And it's not a residential space?
Yeah, that was, as with most things, it's to make sure that it's, you know, a business that's open to the public in some sort, whether it's, you know, by appointment only. Not, this was not intended to say your, your doors must be unlocked and open to the public from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. But.
So you're, you're looking at it from the mixed commercial side where you, obviously the business probably should want people to know where they are and how to get to them and, and everything, versus the industrial side where, you know, if I'd see seen furniture or something, I may not want anybody to see my machines and how I do it. And I'm going to probably put it in a packet and send it someplace. So.
You should probably be in the industrial zone.
Also, I'm saying if I had a little, a live work in the industrial zone, I wouldn't necessarily want a sign or the public to know that, that that's what I'm doing there and that I'm going to be putting it in boxes and sending it. Because I don't really, I don't really, an address is enough. So.
Well, Scarlett's example, Etsy comes to mind too. They could work all hours, right?
All of them. Absolutely, yeah.
Etsy businesses are.
Every single one of them.
But then that could just be a home occupation. You wouldn't need a live work unit to do that necessarily. So.
Well, she's doing really, really well at Etsy.
Well, if you're, if you're building jewelry, you can do it at home. If you're, if you're building strip canoes and selling them on Etsy, you need, you need to live work to, to do the thing. So it's a scale.
I got nothing. This was a good discussion. Real good discussion.
Well, yeah, we should probably wrap up. It's, it's getting on 8:30. Is there any last parting comments before we bring this back? We'll see if, we'll see if it's ready for a public hearing next time or not. I'm not, not sure if we're there yet, but.
Let's take another crack at it first and, and really get the specifics down on the calculations at least. And then put it up for a public hearing.
Well, I mean, if we get, if we feel like we kind of have that aha moment and think that we've struck a good balance, we could probably have a public hearing.
It's just we're missing a couple commissioners. So I know they would want to opine on this, definitely.
And then, well, you know, I'm not, I'm not. In all due respect to the planning commissioners that couldn't be here, I, I, I don't like dragging things out just on the hopes that planning commissioners are going to show up. Because then, you know, there might be two other planning commissioners that are missing and then we can be in this endless loop.
I know how you roll. It's all good.
But speaking of timing, that, that brings me to the planning commission discussion and information items. So we're having the joint planning commission and city council meeting February 1st. So we've always done these March 1st, the first work session in March. Well, we've moved it up this year in effort to move the comp plan process up and hopefully get it done earlier in the year each year. So that joint planning commission city council meeting will be in this room at 6:00 PM. It's a work session. You're probably all familiar with those. So we sit in a circle and well, in the past we've done, I don't know what format we're going to do it nowadays. We've got some new ideas for these things. But what we're going to do is discuss the proposed planning commission work agenda for the 2023 docket. So the, the comp plan amendments of, we've received two zoning change requests this year that the planning commission will likely, you know, will likely be working on. So we'll discuss that at the February 1st meeting and any other important comp plan updates in this 2023 cycle. Not anticipating having any comp, major comp plan text updates. Because our complete revamp is due in 2025, in June of 2025. So in, by. You know, this time next year, we'll be in full swing in updating our comprehensive plan. And we'll talk more about what that means at the February 1st meeting. But if you remember, every, well, it's 10 years now, we have to update the comp plan entirely, including our growth projections, our urban growth area. And then changing the comp plan to reflect how we're going to address the 20 years of population growth between 2025 and 2045. So that's a major update to the comp plan as opposed to just doing some little tweaks here and there like we do in the intervening 10 years. So given that we're doing a major overhaul starting in 2024, not, not really anticipating doing any changes to the comp plan text in 2023.
Is the state going to send you updated numbers of what they want to see? They're the ones that make those projections, especially on growth.
They're not targets. They're projections. And so we'll be receiving that shortly.
Okay.
And starting the process at a, in a regional. And regionally with the Skagit Council of Governments, all the jurisdictions there. And so that's Skagit County, government planners, the Mount Vernon, Burlington, Acordes, La Conner, Seadrill Willie. And we'll be reconciling our urban growth area boundaries together. So it starts with, we get from the Office of Financial Management from the state, what are, what the county's projected growth will be between 2025 and 2045. Then through the SCOG, that's Skagit Council of Governments. The SCOG Steering Committee will make some, or a technical advisory committee, which is the planners, will make some recommendations as to whether we should do the, the low projection, the high projection, or medium, or somewhere in between. We typically go somewhere in, in, in between towards the medium projection. That'll go through the Skagit Council of Government Steering Committee and they'll make a recommendation. And then from there, once they decide what the likely 20, 20, 2044 population projections will be. Each of the cities then kind of will divvy up what all that projected growth is going to be to each of the jurisdictions in the county. Based on past growth and, and current ability to serve growth. That'll then back to each of the cities and the SCOG Steering Committee, which is the, which is the mayors of all of the cities and the county commissioners. And they'll, you know, give their blessing or say it needs tweaking. But what comes out of it is more or less each city, this is what your projected growth is going to be. Go forth then and figure out how you're going to deal with it. Do a land capacity analysis, change your zoning, change your urban growth area boundaries as necessary to accommodate your projected growth. Tell us how your fire department, your sewer department, your police department, your building department's going to manage all of this growth over that 20-year. And that is.
That is the comp.
That is the comp plan updates that you'll be doing.
It, it's a big one. You know, we've always tried to front run things happening in legislature to try and get ahead, to get things, you know, in code prior to have something thrown at us. And right now, the, from, from what I could tell, just by, you know, following what's going on down there, they want more and more density in the cities. So I'm just hoping that we do have the latitude to govern our own resources instead of somebody from wherever coming on in and saying, you need to accommodate this because we told you so down out of a totally different part of the state. Anyway, that's just mine.
Well, ledge session just starting. It's a long ledge session this year. So there's a lot of GMA update proposals in ledge. Will be, of course, something about ADUs. There will be something about middle housing. There'll be other density, housing density requirements that'll be proposed. And well, as they come out, they're just starting to make their way to the ledge where, you know, proposals from the various legislators making its way to the state where we now get a chance to look at them. And I, I work with the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Lobbying Arm. They, they, they act on behalf of the cities and they communicate with us. And I communicate back with them about concerns, making comments on ledge that's being proposed. And just keeping a close eye on it, knowing that, you know, if something does get passed, we'll have to react within the next three to six months typically.
So Pat's going to like this. We need to talk them off the ledge.
About more density possibly coming.
We'll see what comes out.
We'll see what comes out. I, you know, I pay close attention. I try not to get too nervous or make too many reactionary code changes based on what I think's going to come out. Because sometimes something steamrolls its way through, like full steam ahead and like.
Hising committee or whatever.
And you're like, this is going to happen. Like it's got 98% support from the ledge and it's just, it's just coming down the pipe. And then something happens, something weird at the end, the, the governor vetoes one, one line and it totally just kneecaps it. And you're like, oh, okay, great. I don't need to worry about that anymore. So trying not to worry until it's actually signed.
Squirrel jumps out on the road in front of the car, hits the tree.
Tree lands on the railroad track and the whole train's derailed.
Cause and effect.
It's the butterfly effect, right?
So John, are you aware of House Bill 1110 then? Are you keeping track of that one?
I'm not aware of all of them, nor is, nor am I at the point where I know what the numbers are.
Okay. Well, that's the scariest one I've seen coming down the pipe. And it's in public comment tonight. Public hearing in the House Committee. It was at four o'clock today. But it's, it's a scary one. Increasing middle housing in areas traditionally dedicated to single-family detached housing. And we have, we, that's like, they can put a, knock down the house next to you and put in a fourplex or sixplex because the state says that that's allowable. There's nothing we can say about it.
Did you say that was Senate bill, SB?
That's House Bill 1110.
Does it have a companion?
Yeah, it has a companion. Is.
It's called middle house, middle housing?
Well, if you look up House Bill 1110, you'll see the companion Senate bill. My phone doesn't show it right.
So, yeah, there's, there's going to be a slew of these.
Yeah.
I don't, I am aware of one middle housing bill. I don't remember the number.
Why, why are they calling it middle housing?
So middle housing is the term that, middle housing is the stuff in between like big multifamily and single family. So.
Big density without having to call it big density?
Well, no, it's not big density. It's middle density. They also call it the missing middle because cities have kind of abandoned it over the past 30 years. You know, that's the, the fourplex, you know, a four-unit building tucked into a residential neighborhood.
We talked about doing that back in 2004. We were going to do a thing where you, where you one block for, for every single block in town, you could build one. And we couldn't figure out a way to make it work exactly. But, but you could have one thing that was up to six units, I think, was the max. Because science said that a neighborhood will accept six units. But if above that, it's like having apartment complex put in your, in your yard and residential people wouldn't, wouldn't take that. So anyway, so we were doing that. We were talking about doing that as a density thing back in 2004. But, but we couldn't figure out a good mechanism to make it work because who gets to decide who gets that one, that one six-unit thing in there. And, and we looked at Sumner. Sumner was where we got that idea from. Because they were toying with that and I don't know how it turned out.
So the, the missing middle stuff has been very popular over the past few years, trying to allow, tried to break up the residential, single-family neighborhoods to allow some, some amount of middle housing. So it's, you, you have a less homogenous type of neighborhood and there's, there's all sorts of reasons that people say this is a good thing. I mean, you could look at like a, a typical PRD and.
I'm going to say it's like a PRD for.
Is you've got, you've got triplexes and.
You have a mix of things. That's right.
Community with like duplexes and triplexes, but they're, they tend to be nicer and mixed in with the big, single-family houses, mixed in with the medium-sized single. It's all planned out.
I've seen it work. Yeah, I've seen some really good designs out there. Marysville's done some really good work on that where they'll allow you to accommodate duplexes and only a max number, bigger lots, different landscaping requirements. I've seen communities where it'll work. Actually, right here in Mount Vernon, Skagit Highlands, there's a nice development up there that they're, they're, they're closer by, but the way they articulated the design of the different, uh, single families and incorporated the bigger stuff. Yeah, there, there's stuff out there that could.
So we're going to have a whole lot of discussion about this. And thank you for bringing up that one. I'll definitely look into it. Like I said, not much I can do about it right now.
No. It's just weird that they could usurp our oldest planning that we do here.
Yeah.
And say, no, your planning doesn't matter. We'll do it our way.
Well, what they say is you got to change your planning to allow these.
And a lot of the stuff is already there.
Yeah.
And the PRD is a classic example.
If they would do like the building industry and, and people in other sciences do, where you present the evidence and let people come to a good decision. And that's what we've been able to do as communities is, is look at what was the science of, of a situation. And that's what, what I always did. That's why we were looking at the middle housing, what you guys are calling middle housing, because we wanted to not have any more big apartment complexes. Because you get a lot of problems with big apartment complexes, but middle housing doesn't have as many of those problems. So, so it was like, well, let's not have any more multifamily than we've already zoned for. Let's just do a lot of this middle housing stuff and, and it'll be more accepted. The people that live in them won't be like pariah to the people that live around them and so on and so forth.
Totally get it.
And, and so that's where we were headed. But it wasn't crammed down our throat. We came to that through talking to other communities, reading the science, the architectural science and stuff. But the legislature just says, do the thing because we want to do the thing.
Well, Olympia has been push, Olympia has been doing it, pushing it.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's under the guise of the GMA.
The city of Olympia.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they'll, they'll tell you that they've had great results. And there's a lot of literature about how they've done it and, you know, where they, where the planners from Olympia talk about how they did it, why they did it and all of that. So if that's of interest to you, you, it's a little off topic, but you look at, you know, Google, city of Olympia, middle housing, you probably come up with some blogs and newspaper stuff.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. See, I'm much more interested in what, what those people, what people who build, people who do real science on this stuff have to say than I do what a bunch of legislators in a room talk about. It's just.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure what developers would say, but I imagine, you know, developers like getting more units. So I imagine this would be something that would be welcomed by the development community. I was looking to see if Scarlett was still there, but apparently not. So it might, might be a good thing for the development community. Not saying one way or another that we should be doing middle housing. I've talked to the council about it and they're, they're warming up to the idea if we can do it right. You know, pointed out examples of throughout, throughout the city. If you think down at, it's around fifth and.
Sterling.
Not quite as far down as Sterling. Like maybe Nelson. I think it's fifth and Nelson.
Okay. Yeah.
There's a sixteen-unit apartment building.
You're right, there is.
It's only two stories tall and it's L-shaped and it's set back from the street. It's.
Well, the old Willita apartments, is that the Willitas?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, this is, I mean, there's, there's got to be at least sixteen units in there. And I don't think anybody in the city would complain about that facility. So it can be done in a, in a, in a way that's not negative impact on the community.
Yeah, if they're well-planned and.
If you think where the old city library is right behind state, the state street school, there's another apartment building on, I think that's specific. Again, another, it's probably sixteen or twenty units. I don't know. It's much smaller property than the Willitas. And I don't think anybody, and most people don't even know it's there.
Yeah.
So there's examples of this middle housing that was done a long time ago and wasn't problematic and it hasn't been, hasn't ever been. And so the, the movement is to return to those sorts of developments.
And, and you know.
But mixed in in an appropriate way for like your own community.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of experience in it. The PRD code is kind of like a, an example of how that blueprint would, would look as far as the, the lower units, the duplexes, and how that blend would actually happen. So by the time we do get into it, we, we've been down this road before. Like I brought up like the ADU example and what we were talking about tonight. We've covered a lot of ground over the past ten years and you've been here forever. We've got some really good stuff on, on, on the books that we have a lot of, a lot of experience to really draw from. So let's not be afraid of it, not even close to it. Bring it on. Just like she says, bring it on. I'm done.
So thank you for bringing up the middle housing issue.
Yeah.
If we, I guess the point is, you know, let's, let's educate ourselves about it, about what middle housing is. Let's look inwards at ourselves and how we've done it over our history because there are good examples. And then if it comes to a time when the legislature says thou shalt allow middle housing in, in fill, because that's, it wouldn't be a PRD type situation necessarily. It would likely be more like infill situations. How, how can we, how can we do that in a way that honors our tradition and our past and still is okay for the residents in an area?
I'm clear on it. Yeah. Look forward to it, actually.
Great. Well, we'll see you in less than two weeks at, on February first.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I second.
Second. Any further discussion? Motion carries. Meeting is closed at eight forty-four PM. Thank you, everyone.
Did we vote on it?
Oh, didn't we just vote on it? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I always do that. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That's why.
I guess it's off, off the record now, but thank whoever.
This every single time. And look at that. I have it all written down. Look at this.
My idea.
Well, thank you.
To do something was his idea and it wasn't mine. But it was my time, so I'll take it. Thank you.
I do that all the time. And I am right there.